And, hey, I'm. Okay, I'm gonna mute so that there's not any background noise, so just give me a second when I need to answer to unmute my phone.
Now we're ready. Boy, everybody got quiet. I guess they're ready to start. Got my papers back. All righty. We're gonna call the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting to order, but before we get started, I need everybody on this side to stand and take the, and take your oath of, oath of office. I get to swear at you. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
Uphold the ordinances.
Uphold the ordinances.
Of the city of Cherokee Village.
Of the city of Cherokee Village.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member.
Of council members.
To which I have been.
To which I have been.
Duly appointed.
Duly appointed.
Congratulations. The term. Just, uh. Well, we, we got you. Uh, just make sure that you get your oath of off, your oath of office paperwork signed into me so I can get it, get it filed.
I think that just got passed back, did it?
Yes.
Make it to, okay.
Yeah, oh yeah. All right. Let me get this out of the way. All righty, that done? All righty, if everybody will stand and join in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recognize a moment of silence, please. Amen. We got Ms. Angel is gonna, setting in for the city clerk. Her and Ms. Harrison is in Little Rock at the municipal league meeting. So, uh, Ms. Angel, roll call, please.
My name is Charlie.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Ms. Tatum?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Ishmael?
Here.
Mr. Tatum?
Here.
Ms. Rowland?
Here.
We have a quorum?
All righty, thank you. Uh. Everybody had a minute to look over the agenda. I need to have one item added to the agenda under new business number four. And, uh, it will be, uh, the fire chief, Mr. Cal Dentz, needs to make a presentation to the council about, uh, hiring a new position at the fire department.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda with the amendment?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Tatum to approve, uh, agenda item number four.
To accept the agenda with four.
Oh, to, yeah, to accept the, to approve the agenda.
With.
With the addition of new business number four, the fire chief. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, any public comments or questions on the agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move into the minutes. Everybody had a chance to read over the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. If it looks good to everybody and no changes need to be made, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So made.
Motion by Ms. Mrs. Rowland, seconded by Mr. Tatum to approve the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four min, minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Oh. Motion passes. Being no correspondence. Had a minute to look over the financial report. We was down to, uh, kinda closing the year out. Mr. Hinch sent a, sent his, uh, email out with the financials. The financials are actually posted on the city's website. Uh, under the January deal, it's listed as twenty twenty-four revenue and expenditures. Uh, so we got everything. We got that all listed on the. We're trying our best to make sure everything gets put on the website as, as quick as we can to maintain, you know, open transparency. Uh, I kinda like, Misty had, I was showing, she found, did the color. The color, the color coding on there to help everybody, so. No questions on the financials. We was, uh, we closed the year out better than expected, so. So we did good on that one. I applaud the department heads for their diligence of staying as close to within the budget as they can. They, they do. We go, uh, as I've said many times, we're, we're blessed to have some good department heads that can, uh, they work within the numbers they're given. So my mayor's report, you don't have to listen to me too long tonight. It's, it's fairly short. But as the construction continues on the bridge replacement project at Town Center, they have been installing the handrails on the new sidewalks and working on completing the water fix, feature. I want to remind the citizens that when the next road closure starts, which at this time is scheduled for June first of this year, it will not only affect the state highway, but the intersection of Flathead Drive. I ask that you prepare for this inconvenience when it happens. I have been told that with the amount of fill that will be required to expect the road to be closed about the same amount of time as the twenty twenty-four closure. I want to thank all city departments for their tireless work during this last snowfall, the animal control officers and volunteers for taking great care of the animals during this inclement weather, the planning and zoning and administration office for keeping the sidewalks clear outside the building and keeping, keeping everything in working order, answering calls and helping our citizens with questions they have, the police and fire department for going out in the weather and helping the citizens stay safe, and the street department for the long hours plowing snow to get the roads in the best condition as possible. I also have seen the weather forecast for this coming week and ask people to please be prepared for the incoming frigid temperatures. Thank you. Move into departmental reports. Uh, Ms. Megan, anything on the animal control?
Uh, everything is good. Dogs are in the new building and construction for most part is finished.
Good deal.
What would you say?
For those that couldn't hear, the, the, the new dog building is being utilized to house the, house the animals at this time, and construction being pretty well done. There, there, it's in use, so it's. Thank you for getting that, and we appreciate the, we appreciate all the volunteer hours, the donations and in-kind payments and donations and money raised, because without that, it would not have been able to get done. Anything, uh, extra, Mr. Fire Chief? I mean, other than what we're gonna discuss here in a minute?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Angela, since you're here, anything, the planning zoning commission got anything extra?
Not at this time.
All righty. Mr. Police Chief, anything to add? Animal control committee, Ms., Ms. Tatum? Mr. Steve, anything to add to what went on? Everything good there?
They elected new members first of the year.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Mr. Jeff.
Yeah.
You, you poor, you poor guy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
You're welcome. Things are about completed. I think Megan set it on. She got it under control.
Ms. Rowland, A and P, A and P minutes?
I don't have anything to report as of right now.
Okay.
I do have a quick question, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I missed the last A and P meeting and haven't gotten caught up yet, but, um, I know when Jonathan Rhodes was here and we went through that on trying to get someone on the A and P, he had put in a request for A and P for council or mayor whoever to give some sort of description on who, uh, would be approved for, uh, to fill that position. Did that, did anyone ever do anything with that, or is that something we still need to talk about or do?
That was probably might be, I would take the blame for that. That probably has slipped my mind. I didn't remember. I'll get that done.
No problem. I just didn't know if that was done or if anyone on council needed help doing that.
Yeah. All righty, got my note made. Airport commission, they're doing, got a lot, quite a lot going out there. They, uh, they're doing some good things. They got a bunch of, I heard they have the, their two properties rented now, so they're doing, they're, they're doing very well. Track County Solid Waste doing the same. They're, they're still, uh, they're doing very good. They got a good manager out there now that's, he kinda picked up where Brian left off, and he's doing a good job. Uh, seeing there's no old business, we can move into new business. The new business number one is to reaffirm citizens' participation at the city of Cherokee Village public meetings, which is, it's just the reaffirmation of what's already been there. There's nothing changed.
Well, I make a motion, we, wouldn't that be the same under the protocols, cause it's one of the last thing in the protocols? If you read the protocols.
Mm-hmm.
It's one of the last things in it.
It is.
So, can I just make a motion to accept the protocols? That was an old resolution.
It was. Very old.
And since the same thing's in the protocols, we could just.
It's addressed.
Accept the protocols?
Yes.
Say again?
We could just accept the protocols, cause it's the last thing in the protocols?
Yes.
And I make a motion, we accept the, uh, protocols for twenty twenty-five?
Okay, so what you're talking about, yeah, moving, uh, new business number two is council protocols for twenty twenty-five, which addresses citizen participation.
Correct.
And the.
Instead of having an ordinance, we don't.
Yeah, and then, and that is a, that is a, uh, goal of mine this year is to kinda go through some of the ordinances and resolutions to find out which ones are still applicable and enforceable, and the ones that are not to, you know, shed ourselves of, and the ones that are, to make sure that they're still, uh, legally valid.
That's what we're gonna do for the animal control also.
Yeah, so that's kinda my, my goal is departmental wide with planning and zoning and everybody is, we need to, we're gonna step back with all of our resolution and ordinances and see what we need to update to bring them up to modern standards. And to make sure they're legally applicable and enforceable.
And can I just make a suggestion that the copy of this gets put on the website?
Yes.
As its own separate, so everybody understands?
Can do.
Thank you. So that motion was made and seconded, so we vote now?
Who seconded? May I ask who seconded that?
Mr. Tatum?
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Martin and seconded by Mr. Tatum to accept the council protocols for twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'll do a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Ishmael?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, new business number, that was new business number two, skipping and, or moving on to new business number three. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, it's a resolution authorizing automated clearinghouse payment, electronic banking, electronic commerce, and other electronic transfers of funds. Where this come about is, is that we have, you know, we've had had in the past some instances where some of our regular payments are, you know, your, your electric, your, your electric bills, our WEX payment, which our WEX fuel card is what the city buys fuel under, their, our clearinghouse, when we get, by the time we get the bills, they go through the treasurer's office, checks get written and signed, and they get mailed. Uh, we actually had one here, what, about, was it two months ago, Ms. Angela, that it took eighteen days to get posted?
Yes, sir.
And we had to, you know, have, kinda have a plea for our case, so we didn't have to pay a large late fees, so in talking with the attorneys and municipal league, they, when, they said that we need to pass a resolution authorizing that we can do electronic payments, which, like I said, will, you know, for credit card, WEX, clearinghouse, stuff like, or reoccurring bills, that we can do that, and it also help cut down on check writing and signing.
I make a motion, we accept the resolution?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Martin and seconded by Mrs. Tatum to pass resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, a resolution authorizing automated clearinghouse payments, electronic banking, electronic commerce, and other electronic transfers of funds. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Ishmael?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Tatum?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Well, thank you. I know the, the, Ms. Amy and the treasurer's office and the check signers will greatly appreciate that, cause it should help all of us getting that done. Uh, new business number four.
Mayor, before, before we move on to that, I have a quick question, and, cause I thought we would cover it in our protocols. Are we gonna discuss tonight setting up our pre-meetings that we were having on Mondays?
Yes.
And discuss that with council and try to find a better date where everyone or more people can attend?
Yes, we can discuss that in a working meeting in February, yes.
Okay, so we're not gonna set it tonight. We're gonna wait and
Yes.
Have a working meeting in February and then decide then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the, kinda get through this, the, yeah, like, like I was telling Mr. Martin about, we was talking about the phone, phoning in and stuff. Setting some kind of protocols for that, and that's, and we can do that and get our heads together and get something that put on paper, and we can come back February and.
So is that meeting gonna be the Monday before our February council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I like to look.
Is everyone able to come? Because that's the same date that, like, we seem to struggle in getting people to show up.
Wake up. What day would that be on?
Agenda in February. Why don't we do that?
One, two, three.
Put it on the agenda in February.
Well, it'll be on the agenda, but we need to speak about it, and we'll talk about it in the working meeting. The meeting, the regular council meeting in February would be on the twenty-first, so the working meeting would be on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Which is the, the Monday before.
I won't be here. What day will you be here?
Who all won't be able to make that meeting on the seventeenth? Jeff and who else? Anybody else?
Sometimes if it is the third Monday of the month, it makes it difficult for those of us that are in, uh, various service organizations.
Right.
Quanas and so forth, um, that, sometimes that's difficult to get from those meetings. We're, we're having to leave from those meetings early.
Right.
To get here for that planning meeting, and if we have, you know, special meetings that, you know, extend beyond that, you know, you have to make a choice.
Right.
And it, and so that third Monday is often a conflict.
And, and also something that's been discussed in the past, but I mean, it's ultimately up to the council to set dates and times of meetings, but something's been discussed in the past as moving our meetings to the second week of the month. To kinda get it, you know, cause we, you know, it was running, you know, that would get us out of the Thanksgiving, Christmas time and get us in the second week of the month, but, I mean, that, that would be totally up to the council. I mean, the council sets dates and times. But, uh, I would be in, I mean, if we can find a, find a date in February to talk about it, we can. I'm more than willing. I'm, I'm at the mercy of whenever the council decides.
Can most of the council be there on February, what, seventeenth?
Be February seventeenth.
It's a holiday.
It is.
President's Day.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we could still have it, um.
I feel like we need to get a date picked. We already pushed this once, one month from December, saying we were gonna talk about it in January, so I feel like tonight, we need to pick a night that we're gonna meet in February, no matter what. We're all here.
Yeah, we can do it on Tuesday, then. Do it the next day.
Does that help everyone?
The eighteenth?
Tuesday, eighteen.
Well, I think.
Well, I mean, this is just for the.
Tuesday runs into the animal control.
Okay.
Lady that's held in here.
But we could do it before that week, too. We got the tenth, eleventh, twelfth, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. So, third through seventh.
Animal control is the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, you say?
No, I'm saying animal control is the second Tuesday, not the third Tuesday, so you still could do it the eighteenth.
Okay.
We'll just plan on having a working meeting on the eighteenth?
You wanna do the eighteenth? Does that work for everyone? Eighteenth?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
At six o'clock.
Six o'clock, right?
Have you call me?
Yeah.
Yeah, six P M.
We wouldn't wanna do anything any earlier, because that would give us time to, if we have to give something to the lawyer, so he could do it.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean.
Yeah, we can do that. So, working meeting will be on the eighteenth of February, with the council meeting following on the, oh, my calendar's wrong, on the twentieth. I said twenty-first, on the twentieth.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry about that interruption.
Oh, I tell you.
Make sure enough of us were gonna be there.
Would it be something that we're, so we're, we'd be setting it up for whatever we put on March's calendar, instead of trying to put it on the calendar for February?
Yeah.
That sound?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, then everything will start in March.
Yep.
Yeah, that works.
Well, sounds great.
Thank you.
The eighteenth, working meeting. And everybody can attend. There's no.
No, it's a public meeting.
Yeah, it's a public meeting.
All right, Mr. Cal.
All right. Well, I'm up here tonight, um, and it has to do with budget. That's the main reason I asked to be put on the agenda, um. When we were making budgets last fall, um, I have a fireman who's planning on retiring in October, so I'd budgeted for his replacement to start a little bit earlier, so we could potentially have someone at least partially trained before he left. What I couldn't take into account, um, is a tragedy that's hit members of my fire department since then. Um, a couple of days before Christmas, one of my employees was in a bad accident, ended up at U A M S. Um, he's still in recovery. He is home and doing well, but he's gonna be some time out. And then, as of this week, um, one of my men tragically lost his spouse, and we don't know how long he'll need to be out. Makes him a single parent at this point, so we don't know how that's gonna shake out. Beyond that, the last two firemen we hired, one of them's in the academy currently. And then, when he gets back, we're gonna send the other one. So that leaves us quite a bit short. Currently, as of this week, I mean, we're staffing two stations, and there is no backup plan, other than us working overtime. So, I put together some numbers, um, to maybe try to hire this replacement ASAP, um. And approximately, it'd be a thirty thousand dollar increase, when I, and I factored in the LOFT, the insurance, all that appropriate, cause it doesn't just go into one line item. So, uh, and I rounded the numbers up, I mean, so. But that's what I'm here to ask. Um, any questions or whatever, I'll answer them to the best of my ability, but that's kinda where we're at at this point.
Like, like the fire chief was explaining, this, we was, we had in the works already to hire somebody, we're just
Yeah.
Kinda having to accelerate our plans a little bit to ma, make sure that we maintain staffing.
So this is already in your budget?
No, it'll be, it'll be the thirty thousand.
I had it in the budget to start a new guy in August.
So he's just needing.
I'm asking to, you know, maybe we can get somebody hired here before the end of February and start training them up where they can. Um, it takes us, if you get a good recruit, you can do it sooner, but I give ourselves like sixty days to have somebody where they can actually cover a shift, get them trained enough. Uh, Mr. Martin, my employee, Mr. Martin, Corey Martin, he's currently in the academy right now. He's got nine or so more weeks left before he's complete. Uh, Mr. Jeff Merriman will go after that. Um, we actually had him scheduled where there would be overlap. They would both be down there for three weeks, but that was before all this other tragedy happened, so I bumped Mr. Merriman's back where he would start in April, and he'd get done the week of the Fourth of July. And that's currently where that sits right now, but, um. And also, Arkansas law states that if you hire somebody for a firefighter position, they have to be certified within a year of hire.
Hmm, change that.
Where's the money gonna come from? That's my. Cause they're, I'm totally for it, obviously. We need firemen, we need policemen. We can't, we can't do without them, but where's the, our budget was tight this year. Where are we gonna pull it from? We have an emergency fund for stuff like that, or maybe the other emergency fund for fire truck or something?
Yeah, reserves and, we got, yeah, we got reserves back and I mean, we, you know, it's there.
And it's basically what, it's six months more.
Yeah, it's just.
Than what you're gonna hire anyway.
Correct.
I mean, we're gonna hire them anyway. It's just starting them in, like I said, February instead of August.
For the whole month of February, but realistically, some of that time wouldn't be prob, I mean, I don't know how long it's gonna take me. I've got some applications currently. I actually, um, sent an application out today for somebody that's interested, you know, but, uh.
I'm all for it. If you can just tell me where the money's coming from.
Yeah, it'll.
Applications don't always equal good recruits either, so.
Didn't we have a fire truck?
Sometimes it takes some time.
Hmm.
Take it from there, bro. So.
Yeah.
I thought it was committed.
No, we're, I mean, we're good, but, uh, I mean, the, the, I know we're looking down the road a little ways, but the, the employee that's gonna be hired is replacing one that's gonna be leaving, so.
That I understand.
I mean, so basically, really, the, it's a little bit of extra salary in the beginning, but by the end of the year, it's gonna.
But do we have enough in a bank account right now to cover it?
Yes.
Okay.
By the end of the year, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a wash by the end of the year, anyway.
Yes, cause previously, me, Peter, I'd also, like, this employee that's retiring, they get several large payouts for days they have and stuff, and I had actually budgeted for all that already.
So I'll second her motion to, uh, what was the?
Pass it.
To, to let him hire.
Yes. You might wanna put it in the motion on where we're taking the funds from.
That's where I was getting at.
Yeah.
Out of the reserves, we have a, a reserve account, correct? Not the fire department. It would be the city reserve.
Yeah, it would just be added to the, it would just be added, it's, somebody's trying to beep in, I'm sorry.
No, somebody's trying to beep in.
Yeah, just tell them ignore. Oh, uh, uh, now would it be, it would just be thirty thousand added to the fire department's?
From the city reserve.
Okay, okay.
Correct?
Well, and some of it would be admin budget, cause like I said, the insurance and the
Yeah.
Insurance, I guess, would go into, I think it's under this admin budget now, but LOFT and I don't remember. We changed.
But it has to come out of.
But.
City reserve.
It would be, I've got the numbers, so.
Yeah, it's.
The treasurer can divvy it up to the appropriate accounts to cover it.
So that's our motion, and I second.
Yeah. Motion by Mrs. Tatum, seconded by Mr. Martin, do you add the?
For him to hire.
To, to hire the full-time employee.
Okay.
Wait, that'll be a roll call, yeah.
Yeah, all righty.
Cause we're spending money, so you gotta.
There's the, I'm spending money.
Well, so I apologize. I'm familiarizing myself with the report. Where, where is the reserve balance currently? Like, what is our, what is the res, the reserve balance that we're pulling this money from?
It, we have two. We have one in the First National Bank and actually, two in First National Bank, or, sorry, F N B C, thirty years of calling it First National Bank, I'm sorry. But F N B C and then the First Community Bank, both of them, right now.
He's trying to find the line item.
Go on, line item.
On his own board.
Hold on a minute.
My computer was acting up. So, yeah, I see.
Can I ask, Cal? Oh, did you, are y'all finished?
No, go for it. We're.
First Community.
We'll see.
we're actually, we're actually
I just had a quick question for Cal, because he was kind of with us on the budget committee stuff, and it's a little just hard for me to retain and hear everything over the phone. But Cal, just my quick question is, um, this full-time person you need, you're, this doesn't have anything to do with the two guys in training. This is just flat-out new hire. You're hoping to grab a firefighter and not have to train them or anything?
Correct. It has nothing to do with the two new ones that we have now. We're just, basically, I'm asking to accelerate hiring the person that will be replacing the fireman that's retire- retiring in October.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There you go. Okay, yeah, yeah. That's why I keep my old fashioned paper. Anyway, motion, motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Eddie? Mr. Ishmael?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Tatum?
Yes.
Please ignore.
Passed.
Alrighty, motion passes.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Go ahead.
I have a unique position and I ended up working with your fire department pretty consistent. And I would personally like to thank you and all your guys for their professionalism. Never had an issue on scene with any of your guys. You do a great job. I appreciate it.
Appreciate the compliment. I'll let them know.
Ms., Ms. Angela, did you, I didn't get the list. Was anybody on the list that had a public?
There was no one.
Okay.
I got one, uh, as long as we're complimenting people, um, the road department was out scraping snow after the snow had happened. So when we had streets iced up, they were out there cleaning that stuff off, because I had a couple hills near me that were pretty bad. And they took care of them really well the other day, and I want to extend a thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
And I have a question for you. I understand somebody is retiring soon? Or you're losing an employee soon? Is that true?
I've lost one.
You lost one already?
We actually, we was actually able to hire somebody, too.
Okay, but we're doing okay, because I know you guys are a little bit thin over there.
Yeah, we was, we was actually able to hire a gentleman last week, too, so I hope he's, he seems to be working out pretty good. He's, he's worked his, he's worked his first complete week and he's still here, so I'm, I'm proud. He's doing a good job. And he, and he got, and he got thrown in the mix. His first day that he got thrown in the mix, they started plowing snow, so I mean, he didn't, he, he stayed.
So, Mayor, how many total do we have as of right now?
At the street department?
Yes.
Four and you? Yeah, five total. Joey and four workers.
And are they, are they all, um, cross-trained? They can all do the same thing and operate the same equipment, or do they have specific roles that only they can do?
Is there anything we can do to stop the turnover? Get more money? We need to look at them. I mean, it takes time and money to hire somebody.
One of, one of the things I would really like to, I mean, with it being brought up, one of the things that I would really like to try to, the council to really sit down and to, uh, to really sit down and put a good thought to is that we need to start, uh, you know, we, we provide the fire department and the police department gets LOFV, you know, state LOFV retirement, but the, the street department gets a, it's, I always get confused, the four, four oh one A, which is very miniscule. Just, I mean, the city contributes ten percent and, uh, nobody else in the city receives any retirement. None of the admin or planning and zoning workers or nobody. But I would really like the city to, I would really like us as a council to sit down and try to come together to, I mean, there's, to offer, offer our employees some kind of
Well, you gotta
Retirement system, because we don't, we'll, we'll probably never be able to pay the wages that we should be able to pay. But if we can provide them with a health insurance and a retirement system, that, that makes up for the wages we can't provide. And that, I would just really like maybe sit down this year and have a good, hard, hard discussion over trying to find a, a good retirement system that can benefit the cit- the workers in the city that doesn't have anything right now.
Sounds good.
So, anyway, that was my soapbox speech.
Is it a money issue is the reason they're leaving?
Well, and last year, we, uh, myself and Joey, we had two, we had two people throughout the year that come, come to the city that was looking for jobs that come from other cities. One from the county that they have Arkansas Public Employee Retirement and they said, and, uh, they wouldn't come to work here because they, they want to be able to work somewhere that can continue their retirement and, and we don't offer APERS. So they said, no, no thank you. We'll go somewhere else. And so, but anyway, that's, that's
I'm assuming we have, I'm assuming we have, um, documents or showing like what, what the cost would be. I mean, obviously, saying it out loud, it, we, it
Yeah, we just need to sit down. We need to, uh, they, they do presentations. It's not only just APERS. They have Arkansas Diamond, or, uh, uh, APERS, Arkansas Diamond, and I know there's, there's another one I can't think of, but anyway, yeah, I can get with them and they, they can actually come up and give presentations. I mean, they're, they're more than, more than willing to come up and give presentations, uh, so I can get in touch with them. But anyway, that's just something on my radar that I've been kind of working on, but
Mayor?
Any, any other questions?
I just, I just wanted
Go ahead, Ms. Heather.
I just wanted to add what Peter was saying to Joey at the street department. Just my little, uh, spill on that is a big thank you, Joey, for coordinating your guys on their days off, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, to get as much plowed as they could. I just throw the appreciation, and I know police and fire were out in those nasty roads. Thank you for all y'all do. I just wanted to say that.